Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this report for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, if anybody's interested, down at our building department, I was gonna bring one up. There's a star, they're giving away stars that were removed from the flags that were gonna be disposed of. This is to recognize them to salute our servicemen in America. So if you're interested, go down and get a star, whether you find it.
It's actually supposed to, well, I was there at the building department when the guy brought him in. And he was looking for the Veteran Services Commission to do it. And they were all at the fairgrounds because the wall came in yesterday.
And that's another thing this afternoon we're gonna...
Yeah, I went over there and watched him start to set it up.
So it already starts at twelve?
Twelve, I believe, for the...
For all the heels.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be up there, I'm assuming you're...
Ah, yeah, I'm planning on it unless this meeting goes a little long.
I don't think it's gonna go that long. All right, with that said...
The Commissioners' offices requesting the board approve an executive minutes for the meeting of August 30th, 2016.
I'll make that motion. Aye.
Good morning.
How are you?
Well, I'll get back to you on that.
In front of you, you've got the financials for this week. We have a supplemental appropriation request for the Job and Family Services, Children's Services Fund for foster care and residential placements, a travel encumbrance for the clerk of courts, three travel encumbrances for Job and Family Services. In our vouchers, we have a payment of fifteen thousand dollars to the Mullet Company for the engineer's office for our new fueling station, a voucher in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars to traffic software for annual maintenance on scheduling software for transit workstations, a voucher in the amount of nineteen thousand four fifty five seventy-five to Viracom Construction for Water Resources for the Thompson Township Sewer contract fee, and a voucher in the amount of eighty-seven hundred dollars to La Rose Paving for Water Resources for paving at the services center. In the revenue certifications, we have a handful of revenue certifications. One is for the Juvenile Care and Custody Fund, one is for the Juvenile Recovery Fund, one is for CASA, one for Juvenile Court Special Projects, one for Probate Court Special Projects, and one for the Probate Court Computerization Fund.
Commissioners' offices requesting the board approve Executive Resolution Number 16-121, itemizing the financials for the meeting of September 8th, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Jessica.
So I'm here too because our nutrition bid, which does our home-delivered meals and our congregant meals, is coming to a close at the end of the year. So we typically go out for a two-year time period. So we'd like to go out for a bid again and see what we get. We were pretty pleased with the last food vendor we received and look forward to seeing who might bid this time around so we can continue to offer good quality food for home-delivered meals and for our congregant meal participants.
Questions? The Department of Aging is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for the elderly nutrition program preparation and delivery of catered meals according to a federal guideline to be held on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2016 at 2:00 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on September 15th, 2016, September 22nd, 2016, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye. Thank you.
Hi, Joni.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? This is just another one of our down-paying assistants and substantially we have clients that the amount that they owe for the state has been satisfied, so we're pretty concerned with this.
The Office of Community and Community Development is requesting the board approve an executive satisfaction of mortgage for Matthew O. and Victoria M. Teddy for down payment assistance under Grant EC-010261 for property located 106 Grand Street, Charon, as the mortgage in the amount of eight thousand dollars has been satisfied. The Office of Community and Community Development is requesting the board approve an executive satisfaction of mortgage for Matthew O. and Victoria M. Teddy for Rehabilitations Assistance Loan Grant under Grant EC-012262 for property located at 106 Grand Street, Charon, as the mortgage in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and forty dollars has been satisfied.
I'll make those motions.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you, too.
Morning, Joni.
Good morning.
Karen, how are you?
Okay. Okay. Oh, you did add it, okay. Six is, this is to fill one of my part-time attendance on second shift. She, I can't pronounce her name.
I was just gonna say, can you pronounce her name for me?
I know.
Irish gal, right? She's not Irish, yeah.
Actually, she's from the Ukraine. She was raised and educated in the Ukraine. But she is a citizen of the United States now. Okay. And I wanna hire her.
The County Home is requesting the board approve hiring Ms. Vetlana to walk them out to the position of part-time attendant number 1504-1 at the rate of eleven dollars twenty-four cents per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon its successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions and will then be effective September 13th of 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye.
You're gonna have to figure out how to say her name though.
Even if I can say her first name, so that's all fun, good. I think I have a block on her last name. The next one, moving Ariel Lehman from part-time to full-time. This is really a neat story. She worked for me two summers in the Summer Youth Program. And then she came, and when she got done with that, I think she was maybe a junior, she came to work for me part-time. And then when she graduated, we taught her everything that she needed, you know, the parts of this job that we weren't letting her do when she was a kid. And now she's ready to try full-time. So this is kinda neat, that she's done all this. She's a good kid.
Is she an area resident, do you know? Does she live in Georgia County, or?
Yeah, yeah. I think right now, Middlefield.
Okay, I'm just curious.
No. She's from, no.
Yeah.
She's also from the Ukraine.
She's from the Ukraine. She commutes.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think Middlefield.
The County Home is requesting the board approve the reclassification of Ariel Lehman from part-time attendant to full-time attendant number 1504 to be effective September 11th, 2016, remaining at her current rate of eleven dollars twenty-four cents per hour and in addition to her probationary period.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You made it.
Made it, yeah.
I thought about two bits.
Was that it? I mean, with that shirt, no offense, but it looks like you should have a flag.
Yeah, that's good. I was behind the scene. It wasn't her fault, it was a 7-Up truck behind her.
Oh.
She got pushed into me. Just the item on the agenda is the second disbursement for state funds for the Clay Street projects on the amount of, requesting the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and eleven cents. This bill will be one more.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the board approve the authorized board clear here, board number 2X, seeking the help of the work commission and pending disbursement request number certification number two in order to release funds from the state portion for the S. offer surfacing of Clay Street CH37 sections A and B in Conover Township in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
I'll make that motion, second.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye. Thank you.
They actually designated him initially by our decision for certain projects. You are the, on some of them, you guys on some of them, the Roth is on some of them. So as they come through, you are the ones that assign them to that sport.
Morning, Jerry.
Morning. Jerry, why don't you take your time? What do you wanna talk to us about?
I don't know.
The first item here is filling in one of our open maintenance worker positions. John Amorza is the choice to hire there. Quality individual, he's got a great work ethic.
That's true, isn't he?
I believe so. He is Georgia County resident, I'm not exactly aware of that. But yeah, he's a good quality individual. Everybody we talked to, former employers, current employer, even said hard worker, John Amorza.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve hiring John Amorza to the position of maintenance worker number 2330 at the rate of sixteen dollars sixty-seven cents per hour with a 100-day probationary period. This offer of employment is contingent upon its successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions and will then be effective September 26th, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye.
Next item here is a service contract with Generator Systems to perform maintenance inspection on the two generators of our booster stations in our Bainbridge water system. Sure we have the backup generators work, so when the power goes down, we can still provide water.
So who doesn't back up?
Well, it's the water side. This is so they can still have water to flush their boats.
It's all related.
Exactly.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve an executive service contract agreement with Generator Systems LLC to perform preventative maintenance and inspections of the 100-kilowatt diesel generator located at the Bainbridge Booster Number Two and the 125-kilowatt generator located at the Bainbridge Booster Number One for the years 2017, 2018, and 2019 in the amount not to exceed seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars.
Are we own, we own those generators?
Yes.
Water Resources own, I don't think. Okay. It's not a lease deal or anything?
No, they're on by us. It's all on by us.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Rare?
Aye.
Those diesel or natural gas? I believe both of those are diesel.
How long do they run? On the backup situation?
Off the top of my head, I don't know those ones specifically. We have about 35 backup generators in our system, so with the booster stations and trick treatment plants and all that, so.
Do they run 24 hours?
They'll run 24 hours as long as we keep, you know, keep the fuel.
Do they come...
I think they are, I think they are 24-hour, I'd have to go back and look, but I think they're a 24-hour capacity on the fuel.
Do they come online periodically just to, for lubrication and to...
They're exercised, I don't know, I believe...
Like you're one at home, you know, comes on for an hour or two.
Just 15 minutes.
Oh, okay.
All of ours are, you know, are exercised equally, so.
Charge the batteries, keep the oil.
I'm just curious, I don't know what time, in order of magnitude, how much it costs us for that? Let's say there's an outage and you gotta run that generator for 24 hours, what's that power cost us relative to what the power company charges? Pretty, quite hefty, right?
Oh, it's, yeah.
I'm just wondering, comparing it.
Less than if we let it back up.
That's what, yeah, that's why it's a backup generator, not a permanent generator.
Well, that's where I was going. I said maybe we could centralize power in Georgia County, which is, wait, the county commissioners power systems.
And it's gonna be less than a coal plant if we put a coal plant.
Given what current rates are, I'm thinking maybe we oughta have a, you know, Georgia County utility. So what do you think? You wanna run that one?
Sure, why not? At the same rate of pay, right?
Yeah. We'll give you a little, actually. We need to have a dam someplace, we gotta do a hydro power thing.
There you go. Work with Akron.
We could just cut the power with... All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So Kate just sent me an email about their airport date.
Oh, airport date.
They're just coming up on the 17th. And you'll notice that it says that they're having a group ceremony, that they are going to be recognizing local law enforcement agencies. And they were interested to know if anyone of you could be attending and want to see if they could.
I was planning on attending. I didn't say we're gonna attend anything like this. I'm hoping to get a free airplane, right?
When is this?
It's on 17th.
Seventeenth is Saturday.
Anybody wants free, or you want pancakes, and I don't know if the, I suppose they're free. And be around airplanes on, or September 17th, the airplane.
The C-123s is gonna be there.
Yeah. That's the list of the...
Bring back bad memories. Bring in all that fuel that you're finding.
Plus, I'm working on trying to schedule the joint meeting with their board and so, with commissioners.
Do you need this? Do you need an item? I vaguely remember that my scheduler asked me doing something on Saturday, the 17th.
Seems like a popular day, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, I'm like, but I don't remember what it was. Somebody's getting married or doing some, I don't know what it was. But I don't know the times.
Oh, that's true. We don't know.
Just remember, it was to keep the 17th clear.
Keep the 17th clear for something, yeah.
And your summer-based meeting has changed to the 22nd?
To the 22nd.
We originally talked about doing it this afternoon, and Trumbull County was on there, but also got moved to the 22nd in the afternoon.
Did you, did we talk about this? Did I tell you there was nothing going on on the 22nd?
Yeah. We talked about it on, when you were on the phone. Joyce has to do something, but you're not.
Yeah, 'cause I found out that I had something on the 26th.
I made a conflict on the 22nd, too. I had to pack my calendar.
It was not on there.
That was my, the personal date I packed on.
That's the 15th. I have you marked off as the 15th. With your wife.
September 22nd. Oh, that's a B R I mark on people that have 230.
This is a 130, so I think.
That's right, 15, thank you. Good thing I've got my electronic calendar here, so.
My conflict is on the next one, on the board of revisions, but...
I don't know if they're...
Well, some of them last a half hour and some of them last six hours, so...
And I haven't received anything on whether they're gonna hold that one or not, so I'll have to...
Well, I'll check with the Auditor's Office to find out what the...
We have board of revision on Monday, so maybe they'll tell you.
This Monday?
Yes.
Yes. They, they need, probably need to start to dwindle pretty quick as we get to the end of the year, but... I'm not in charge of that. We apologize for the dead air time, but...
Yeah, 11 minute to...
We gotta wait for 11 minutes, then.
We have...
Mike, you wanna come and tell us transit stories?
Yeah, we have a public hearing at 9:30, not, that we probably can maybe move up a couple minutes, but not as many.
Certainly not 10.
Yeah.
It's advertised, 'cause we know there'll be throngs of people showing up at 9:29.
We could fake the clock being off for... It could be inaccurate by a minute or so.
Anybody wanna say anything about the fair that was completed?
It was pretty hot. There were a few days that...
I don't remember the weather, the fair was being so nice for the whole weekend.
It was beautiful, a lot of people. The auction, we got an opportunity to go over and buy some chickens and rabbits. And apparently Lori, one of the ladies that works in our office, her daughter raises pigs, and she did quite well on this pig.
Was that a record?
That was a record, I think.
For the pig?
Twenty dollars, about $6,000 for a pig. That's an expensive pig. Yep, you fry up that bacon and you're gonna have to appreciate that.
It's like eating dollars.
So I went home and told my grandkids, I said I bought rabbits at the fair, and they said, well, can we see them? Can you bring them home? They're gonna be delivering them frozen, and they're not gonna be so fluffy.
I bought a show rabbit for my granddaughter, it was only $10, but the cage was 50. But it's a little dwarf female, and so she promised she's gonna take care of it, but we'll see how that goes.
The donut, donut store was up to snuff, had their usually great tasting cake donuts. When I was over in the Vietnam Theater, I lived on cake donuts. Cake donuts and coffee. They bring back fond memories. And the donut store's right there in front of where the veterans and all of the... The worst stuff is over there, so. I think the fair was a lot of fun, a lot of people, a lot of positive stuff going on. Did everybody here go to the fair?
Hi, boy, I liked the plague.
Really? Oh, how sad.
But I lived in Burton for 10 years, so, right off of the circle. So it was crazy, we would go out of town.
You know, the interesting thing...
There's someone else that agrees.
How many hours?
A couple hours.
You spent a couple hours there?
Yeah, about 76. You know, the interesting thing about the fair is I do, kinda do a survey, I'm a little goofy that way. And I talk to people that are walking around the fair, and I poll them to find out where they're from. And there's a huge amount of people that aren't even from Georgia County that go to our fair.
Yeah.
We have people from Trumbull County, and Ashtabula County, and Portage County, some people from Cuyahoga County. But the vast majority were from Ashtabula, Portage, the people that I talked to in Asht... And they had the Canton Fair going on, too.
Canton Fair. Yeah, I went there on Sunday to the Canton Fair. I'd never been there, and I said, well, I can still walk, I wanna go there. And it's like huge by size, by area. My understanding is that we have like 150-some acres, 158 or so, something like that. At Georgia County Fair, they have like over 300 acres as their fair around. It's big. Outside of the size, ours was better.
Well, I've been able to go to the fair managers convention the last several years, the commissioners, and they have the first weekend in January. And they always, I mean, as the people are talking, you hear about two fairs that stand out throughout the state. Canton Fair and the Georgia Fair. We have a very active, very dedicated hard worker group.
Typically, I'm at, in years, recent history, I've been at the fair for eight days, it's open for five. So I've never had, I've never had an opportunity to go to Canton Fair, and I just told my wife, Sunday, we're going there. And as I said, it, it's a nice county fair, you know, but very reminiscent of ours, except the last few years, I've been fortunate enough to have a reserved parking spot somewhere within, it's, you still walk a distance, but it's not out there. And when you go to the Canton Fair, they, I think they check your license plate, go, oh, this guy's from Georgia County, park him over there by Niles.
That's Marara's County.
I'm like, wow, what a hoof. But the fair, fair board does a great job.
True American out there. People from all, watch the light straight.
And the values of once you see the young people that participate in 4-H, the hard work, I mean, it's just, that kind of ethic is something. I don't know if they teach that in school as much anymore as what you can get by participating, that kind of thing, so.
David and I ended up seeing each other on...
Monday.
Monday, at the bull riding event, which was interesting.
Nobody stayed on the bull long enough.
Yeah.
Eight seconds to be able to be considered for a competition, and they were all getting thrown off. I mean, the bulls were definitely winning.
Yeah. They open that gate and the guy's on the ground. Whoa. Big good place for Velcro or some kind of super glue or something, you know. That gate opens. However, a few of them, in their dismount, looked a lot like me snow skiing, you know. Going through the air in some direction that you didn't know a body could be that contorted just before it hit the ground.
You know, a number of the fair board members were encouraging me to ride those bulls. I'm not sure why they...
I'd have thrown in a few bucks. No. The one very neat thing about this company that put them on, they were coaxing a five-year-old boy and a five-year-old girl to come down onto the track. Can, and we need a five-year-old boy and a five-year-old girl. And the clown had his routine, and he said something about a bicycle. And so finally, they got a five-year-old boy and a five-year-old girl, and the little boy didn't wanna participate that much. I think his mom pushed him through the fence. And the little girl, well, then they danced too, you know, the chicken dance and a couple other little things that they did. And then the rodeo company presented each one of them with a brand-new bicycle. I thought that was cool.
That's cool.
Yeah, I, I thought, yeah. Yeah, 'cause when you're five years old and you've been promised something, you're expecting it. When you're our age and you're promised something, you kinda just, you know, you become cynical.
It's a lot to...
That's a positive reward for volunteering, and I always had a negative view of volunteering.
Well, that comes from the military.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, don't volunteer. But that was, that was...
The grandstand was packed for all the things I saw. I took my granddaughter to the demo derby, and she'd never seen one. My youngest granddaughter's 10, and just takes pressure on her face, she just thought that was fascinating. I explained to her the demo derby strategy, which is you stay in reverse and hit people in the back of your car so we don't, or leak in your radiator, so. A lot of backing up going on out there, but she loved it.
The strategy will change with electric cars.
I was, yeah, I was telling my daughter that, I said, I wonder what it'll be like when they're all electric cars, it won't be sound, it'll just be home.
And how will you handle this when you got self-driving cars?
Cause we'll be avoiding each other.
Yeah, that's right. They...
Yeah, like the Magnus.
Once they go to that autonomous cars, every day might be a demo derby.
That's true.
When they're out on, you could go out on I-90 and see a demo derby once.
Put bumpers on.
The machines start to drive themselves.
So how we doing on time?
Okay, we're 9:20. Nobody had any questions?
Joe, you wanna get up and turn the clock ahead a couple minutes?
Good morning.
Use the podiums.
Oh, okay. Move it over here.
Did you look like a natural?
Probably a college professor. Or a preacher.
So the first thing I need is a women's reading.
I, okay, I move that we, with the reading hearing.
One of these days, we're gonna go ahead and do the public reading, 'cause I just wanna hear what it sounds like.
I second you.
Commissioner Rare?
Yes. Looks like it's 9:20.
Welcome, Karen. Ohio Transportation, rural transportation program.
This is our yearly application, and we're asking you to approve the 5th port for our yearly grant from the FTA, S M S, or through ODAT. It's the typical same 5311 rural transportation fund. This year, the operating grant that they allocated to us is 550,000 dollars. Our capitalized maintenance grant is 164,500 dollars, and our state grant is 152,000 dollars. Couple that with the elderly and disabled grant, which is going to be somewhere between 57 and 58,000 dollars this year. We don't get that by a month until November. And the vehicle grant of 226,395 dollars. That means from the, our total grants received this year would be 1,050,898 dollars. That's for the feds and the state. The other local monies that we have to handle with that, totals 380,045 dollars, as we can best determine right now. Those local monies include contracts with JFS, Aging, Greenwood Health, Language Learning, which is Camp Sioux Osborn. And those total, in our estimation, are around 230,000 dollars. Our other local monies that we normally have are, besides our fair box, is our auction for vehicles, which we estimate next year will be about 10,000 dollars. Advertising right now, which is projected, I have 28,000 dollars in advertising revenue, which is a fair call. Two years ago, I talked about it, we were at about 700 dollars, so we made a slight decrease there. And then a general contribution... And then a general contribution, a general fund contribution, I've needed up to about a hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, and this night, you know, some cost allocation items, you have to use that. So, our total.
What was the fair box, I'm sorry?
On the fair box, our fair box will probably, we have to take that off the top, and I, I can't give the exact number of that right now, but our fair box will be next year. I do have it on the, uh, the, uh, grant declarations, as well as my budget application form this year. Uh, so that gives us a total of a one million, four-hundred-and-thirty thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. That's a significant cut from last year of, of, last year, we were at one million, five-hundred-and-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one, that's a seventy-seven thousand dollar deduction. The state actually, the, the government, the Fed, FTA, actually cut us a hundred-and-three thousand, fifty-five dollars, and that's primarily due to the fact that in the year two thousand and fifteen, when we were trying to be very fiscally prudent because of some monetary issues that we had, we left a little over ninety thousand dollars on the table that we cannot draw down from that fund. And in their wisdom, if you don't draw it down, they're gonna use it, they're gonna, next time, they're gonna get to somebody else's money, so, uh, we're gonna make up some of that, uh, with some of our local revenues, so we're gonna be down about seventy-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars, or five percent decrease, all of that. Good thing, the positive in there is this year, you know, for two thousand and sixteen, our vehicles, you know, we were, we're gonna get a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, or three-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars for seventeen, that's sixty-three thousand, one-ninety-nine for a vehicle, that's the, uh, cost that the state, the feds are covering. Next year, we have to add ten percent of that for seven thousand dollars of vehicles, we have a hundred-and-thirteen thousand of local cash, which is, this year was a hundred percent they paid for, next year it's ninety-ten, so, that's, uh, pretty much it. So, questions, comments?
My comment is that, what, correct me if I'm misstating this, please, but if we operate prudently and conservatively, then they punish us the following year for not just flagrantly spending money.
I'm tasked with spending the tax dollars wisely and not using, spending them unwisely, I guess, and not, not, you know, abusing what we have there, so, I do, I have many, many conversations with, uh, the ODOT rural transit managers about, and in fact, I've sent them a letter about expressing my, uh, I guess, need to spend the tax dollars wisely and not frivolously, and in that respect, not to be, I think, usual repugge for it, but not, that should be taken into consideration when they give us our grant, is that I'm actually trying not to spend our money frivolously. We, we maintain our buses, we don't, you know, to buy the basics for our buses, we don't have anything that's extra or what we consider extravagant, uh, we need all the ADA and E and D rules for our buses, and that's it, we don't go above and beyond that. As far as our hours, we have drivers, we watch that closely, we try to eliminate or minimize any overtime with our, our time force, and for sure with our, our overtime, our full-time force. We try to say yes to everybody, and that's why we're trying to expand our workforce a little bit, so that we don't have as many short jobs, and, uh, so, we have, on the positive side, as far as that goes, we have had a slight, and we have, uh, since two thousand and fourteen, our, our revenues from just general trips, not contracted trips, that's just a moment calling, as we have increased by about three percent, so. My, my expectation is that we'll increase probably three to four percent next year. We have a dedicated manager person that now oversees our dispatching, and, uh, that person's slowly working into our traffic, the trip spark system, so, but you're.
Yeah, no, I'm, 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 and they make the adjustment, uh, on a, uh, one year's budget. They don't average it out and watch that we're saving for two years or three years, and then make an adjustment. If there's an anomaly that, that causes that reduction, they don't take that into account, consideration, they just, oh, you didn't spend it, and probably would be foolishly spent if you had to just start spending it at the last minute, I mean.
Keep in mind too, the, the, it's, if, for the person that doesn't understand how we're funded, we don't get a, and a lot of people, and I, and I really didn't realize this until this year, I was making these meetings, a lot of folks don't, uh, we don't get when I say we're gonna get five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on January first, there's not this pot of gold that's not coming to Jager County Transit Banking County that we have to spend. This is money that the state and feds hold out to the seven ministers through ODOTs of the state, that they hold, and as we have expenditures, we can reimburse for that. Now, our operating, we get reimbursed at a fifty percent rate, so I have to have at least, I have to have the entire cash up here, and then I'm gonna get reimbursed for that as I spend it. And our capitalized maintenance, which is like the rolling stock, my mechanic salary, and one-third of my operations manager salary, et cetera, we get reimbursed normally at the eighty percent, but I actually have to have the local cash to do that, and if I don't have the local cash, I really can't take advantage of that money sitting there, so it's kind of a two-edged sword, so. Some counties, some rural counties are, are, are better in the local cash department, they have, uh, uh, more contracted work, which is very lucrative, uh, so, that'd be an example, Ottawa County, I believe it's Ottawa County, has about eighty percent contracts, so, the contract now allows us to charge for the allocated cost for our rides, and their local agencies agree to that, or you don't have quite that, as good a here as that in some places.
So, so as a side note, related but not directly on topic, the, these dollars we're talking about are, come out of our eighteen-point-five cents federal gas tax, and so it was set aside for transit, um, and, of that money. So, that's money that was promised to go into our roads, and the federal government made the decision, well, we won't put it into roads, we'll put it in buses instead, and so we do as good a job as we can managing those resources. Other communities, I would question the management of that. If I go downtown Cleveland at any point today, stand on the corner of New Clinton Ninth and watch the empty buses driving by you, I would say, there's a whole bunch of money just flushed on the toilet. Well, think about this, and I'm gonna say this for the public, for the public's benefit, if they weren't wasting that money, all these other communities, and they could give it back and put it toward the roads and the infrastructure, we wouldn't have to have a conversation, which we're gonna have, about our infrastructure falling apart, because the amount of waste that we have currently embedded in the system, Mike's doing the responsible thing, others don't necessarily, and so, I, you know, that's part of the dilemma that we have, that we have a system set up that says, oh, if you don't spend it, you lose it, and we're gonna give it to some of these other folks over here, or not necessarily being as responsible, and, and they're, they could care less, they're just gonna suck it up and, and throw it away, in my vernacular. And we could be put into apocalypse. I just drove downtown Cleveland the other day, and the roads are horrendous, and there's nothing, tons of money into other things other than roads. They're taking road money and they're putting it elsewhere, and then they're complaining about the fact they can't take care of the roads. So, just file that away for the public, to, to realize that our system is not wired to protect our tax dollars, and it's not always honest with us in terms of how we're utilizing those tax dollars, so. There's, we're having a conversation on Friday at Noaka, on an opportunity court order, in which the governor has a pet project, where he wants to take fifteen million dollars out of the Noaka pot, our road dollars, and put it into his pet project to put a road off of four-ninety down to the University Circle. Might be a good idea, I'm not so sure that the rest of us need to pay for his pet project, and so, anyway, I, some of these things make me crazy, and that's the reason I'm making this comment, because unless you guys know, you guys don't know, the public does not know that all this stuff is happening in the background and the implications of some of these things, and unless the public gets involved, the stuff will just continue, so. Anyway, sorry for using this as a soapbox to be able to, to make some comments here, but this stuff makes me mad.
Ask them for a hundred thousand, that's all, just ask them.
I mean, Mike does a fantastic job, I have an order's operations.
Well, it, it would be, like, the corridor would be handy, but for me, I gotta go up forty-four, get on ninety, drive in ninety, get on the air belt, go over, get on four-ninety to come back to the clinic. I can, I can see it being a real time saver for me, and I'm part of Noaka, you know what I mean? I mean.
Go down Liberty Boulevard.
Yeah, if you live in, if you live in Cleveland, it's a win-win situation no matter what, but.
Well, it may, it may be a winner for the clinic and the University Circle, and God bless them, and I mean, I hope that they're very successful on that side, but why should everybody else tap to pay the belt? Let's have a conversation about that project and the merits of that project and funding it and doing it, not taking away from Jager County roads.
Well, at least it's a road.
And not taking away from.
It's a streetscape, and bike paths, and all this other stuff that is not helping move traffic around.
Or a freestamp or something, a freestamp like that.
Or.
To represent the people.
Well, thank you, Mike, thank you for the.
Okay, you wanna read that?
Any other, any other questions or comments?
Any other questions to go to the grand?
Yeah, we're already in trouble enough.
Okay, you will close the public hearing at nine forty-two. The Transit Department is requesting the board approve execute resolution number sixteen dash one-twenty-two, authorizing the submission of a proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the USDOT, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified forty-nine, USC, section fifty-three-eleven, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation on grant proposal approval.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ritter?
Aye.
Commissioner Kedlin?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are you, always numbers, I saw you writing them down, he's already got them written down, identified, we can get a copy of them.
Yes.
Or she'll get a copy.
You have them in your email, but I'm correcting my. Is that kicked in today?
That's it for our, that's right. I get a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Adjourn. Unless there's any questions of the audience, or questions?